Good evening, welcome. This is our Yukon City Council Yukon Municipal Authority Work Session. I feel like I'm echoing.
Echoing.
And tonight, we'll start with our debt service presentation by Chris Gander of Bank of Oklahoma. Thank you.
We've served as your municipal advisor, which basically means we help you guys borrow money. You're fiduciary. We're on your side of the table and negotiate transactions with you, look at all your finances. And generally, we come every year at least just to kind of sit down, go over where you are as it relates to your debt, go over your debt service. And so, that's what I'm here to do tonight. We're not talking about actually doing any kind of financing. We're just kind of doing a refresher on where you guys are as it relates to your debt. And a lot of you have seen this before, but for the ones that are new council members, let's start with this, this sheet, the long sheet that kind of has all your debt service schedule on it. So, these are your revenue, basically paid with sales tax, debts, and this is what your debt services are going along the left-hand side. That's your fiscal year years. And then going across the top where it says 2012 bonds, 2013 bonds. It means those bonds were issued in 2012. So, they were issued in 2012. You've been paying on them for 12 years, and they're going to fall off in fiscal year 2023. Same thing for the 13 and then the 2015A. Those fall off in fiscal year 2022. You just go across and you can kind of see all your debt. So, you have to go to the very far right. The last thing you did is the 2020 note. So, you go all the way to the very far right, the bold column, and that's your debt service payment. So, on all of these debts. So, in fiscal year ending June 2020, your total debt service was $4,925,174. And for this fiscal year, which we're coming to the end, it ends June 30, you paid $5,204,728. And it's not a perfectly, I mean, sometimes if you have a payment on July 1, you're actually going to have that money go to the trustee a little bit ahead of time. So, sometimes you see numbers that aren't exactly the same, but it's just a little bit to do with timing. So, that's kind of where most of the information is you want to see. If you go down to the bottom, what we call the call date as it relates to on a car payment or your mortgage, you can prepay pretty much anytime. There's never any restrictions. As it relates to bond issues or debt issued by municipal governments, there's generally some kind of protection because whoever's lending the money wants to know they're going to earn that interest rate for a given number of years. And so, each of these had different call dates. Some are callable or prepayable, some are not. So, for example, the 2012 is prepayable or was prepayable anytime after January 1, 2018. We haven't refinanced it because that rate is a one point, and you look at the bottom, the rate's at a 1.87%. And if you take into your, you might be able to borrow a little bit less than that, but after you take into the cost of issuance, things like that, it just doesn't make any sense to try to refinance those, and they're going to pay off so quickly. So, same thing with the 2013. It's at a 1.92%. 2015A, 2.19. And you just kind of go across there, you can see what the, so they're all fairly low rates, if not very low rates. The 2017B is a taxable note, so it's a little bit higher. You're having to pay tax. All these others are issued tax exempt, so the person that receives the interest does not have to pay tax on that income. And then you can see what the original amounts were going across the bottom. So, this, kind of the book here, not a book, but the multiple-page handout, this is just more detailed on any of those you want to see. So, for example, the first sales tax and utility system revenue refunding bond series 2012. So, that's the 2012 bonds on that long sheet. And there, you can see what was the original amount, what's the current amount that's still outstanding. And we'll go through this one. I mean, you have 6.5 million left outstanding, or that was the original amount, 6.5 million. You have 1,395 still outstanding. It was just issued 12, 18, 2012, 2.125% average coupon as it relates to bonds. Each bond will have a different rate inside of single issue. Average debt service remaining is 720,000 per year. Final maturity, January 1, 23. Trustee bank is Bank of Oklahoma. That's who manages your payments. You make monthly payments to the trustee, and then they pay the bondholders on your behalf. You have a reserve fund on that, which is just basically a security fund. So, if you couldn't make your payment, the trustee will tap into that $650,000. It's your money. It's there on your behalf. You get the earnings from it. A lot of your debts don't have that reserve fund. Says what the funds were provided for. Lot of pretty generic capital improvements for the city, issued under certain indenture from 1996, secured by, and I give you what sales taxes are secured by, and then when it can be called. So, I'm not going to go through each one of these. I mean, have you guys go to sleep on me. So, you kind of skip, I would say, let's go all the way to page five, I think, just because it's a little bit different. Other than that, all those pages before, it's just, once again, details of all the notes you've seen there. And then here are your sales taxes. So, and then, once again, you go back to the notes, see which one is what sales tax secures what debt. So, you have your 2% general, you have two three-quarters, and then you have two-quarters, and you can see what each one of those are for. And if, it doesn't look like you have it, it looks like they're all permanent. Next page, page six. Just a comparison of sales tax. You're kind of, I'd say, middle to lower as it relates to your city sales tax, and then your all-in is 4.35. You have the state tax on top of that, which is 4.5. So, you're right now, you'll be paying, if you go buy something for a dollar, you're going to pay $8.35 inside the city of Yukon. So, I mean, you can look at Shawnee, the city's lower by a half cent. However, their county, and that is a pretty high county, substantially higher than most, is almost one and a half. So, they're a full, more than a half cent higher than you. So, you know, you look at total, once again excluding the state, you can kind of see where you guys lie on comparable-sized cities. Down below, you guys have probably seen this updated, your historic sales tax, which has been, had nice growth. The last couple of years have been flat, so just a tiny bit down. And then the next page, page seven, is your general obligation bonds. You guys issued general obligation. What general obligation bond means is property, it's backed by property tax. So, property tax bonds have to be, the only way you can issue them is there's an election to issue the debt, and the voters have to choose, basically, you want it, that they want their property tax to pay for a certain project. You'll see quite a few, I'm trying to see if I've got another on the next page. Quite a few communities around the metro have around 10 to 15 mills. Edmund's at zero. You guys are working towards zero. So, it's becoming more common. But anyway, you have one bond issue outstanding, 2015 bonds originally done, $6,885,000. You can see down below on Table 6, at the bottom of that page, what the principal payments are. I think really what matters, you jump to the next page. The way the GO bonds, they just, you issue the debt, you take the debt service, you divide it by the total net assessed valuation, and that gives you what's called the levy, and that's applied to everybody's house. So, if somebody has a $100,000 house, they're going to pay half as much as somebody that has a $200,000 house versus twice as much if somebody has a $50,000 house. So, it's everybody pays their pro-rata share based on the value of their property. So, it's kind of the same thing here. It goes back to 2011. You've had nice steady growth. No, actually, you didn't have any negative year. You had .07 growth in 14. That was your lowest year, but other than that, nice steady growth. Your biggest property taxpayers, which is pretty normal, are your utilities. You see that on the bottom of the page, Oklahoma gas and electric. Lowe's is number 10. And then, page-
Got a quick question.
Yep.
You're talking about property tax. When have we had the last property tax rise? You know, when did we raise the last property tax?
You haven't. So, the last time, as it relates to, and I'm, we'll have to check and see when we refunded that bond issue, the 2015, which is where this tax is coming from, refunded the original bond issue? Find the right page.
See, I'm somewhat concerned about the infrastructure of Yukon. As you know, we have an older city, and the water sewage, all these things, the roads all need to be repaired, and I'm trying to figure out where's that money going to come from? And I'd like to know if the last time we raised taxes on our property.
Yep. So, and good question, and there's never a real simple answer. But first off, you all passed, you authorized $13 million worth of bonds in 2003, December of 2003. In fact, it's on page seven, and December 9, 2003 is when the election was. And at that time, you authorized to issue $13 million worth of bonds. So, if you look at that series, 2015 GO refunding, if you go down towards the bottom, it basically said what it refinanced. So, at that time, that was the last time you used property tax. At that point, you issue the bonds, and then the tax is levied each year. What's, as it relates to general obligation bonds, is there's a lot of nuances inside the state law. And so, instead of just issuing debt and having level principal payments every year, you have to have level principal payments. So, as you know, with a mortgage, you pay a whole lot of interest and very little principal to begin with, and finally, you get towards the end, man, you're paying a whole lot of principal and very little interest. Well, the state law prohibits us from doing that. We have to have level principal. So, that means your debt service is highest in your first year, and then it gets a little bit less, a little bit less, a little bit less. So, goes all the way back to, in 2004, we issued this bond, and your payments were this, and then they went down, 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 and they're still going down. We refinanced them, but we've got to still stay within inside those rooms. So, we have the debt service going down, 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 and then you have the net assessed valuation, as you saw earlier, going up, up, up. So, your levy just ticks down, ticks down, ticks down. So, the short answer is, you authorized bonds in 2013, and they were issued, and ever since then, the tax levy's been going down. The other interesting thing is cities are not allowed to pass a levy. You guys can't just say, hey, we just want to tax at 10, what they call, we call mills, but it's just a fractional of a percent. You say, hey, we want to levy 10 mills. You can't do that. Schools get an operational levy, they get a building fund levy, the VOTAC gets an operational levy, the county gets an operational levy. And then they can also go out and issue bonds, and generally, you'll see your school district, they'll issue, they'll do an election every five years or so, and they issue bonds every year. Cities don't get any operational levy. You can't, there's no way for you guys to implement a levy for operational purposes. The only way you can put on a property tax is to actually authorize a bonding. And through that bond issue, then you issue those bonds, and then it's kind of like the tail wagging the dog. I mean, you issue the bonds, and then that drives what the tax rate is. And that's why the cities, the cities that use general obligation, and this is, we were not here to come talk about general obligation, we asked a question. The cities that do, and it works well with streets, but the cities that do issue or have a kind of a CIP plan that's tied to general obligation bonds, they generally issue bonds every year in some amount, trying to maintain a levy. They don't want their levy to jump up to 15, then work its way down to 5, then jump up to 20, and then they want to maintain. So, they kind of lay out a long-term plan of, here's the target tax rate we want to stay at, and they look at other comparables, and once they get there, they just, they maintain it.
So, have we got that plan? Have we got a plan that's going to keep us level?
The last, you do not. And that's, the last, the last general obligation bond that you passed was that December 9, 2003.
Yeah.
The last election you had was for the park, and I think it was the biggest failure I've ever seen in my 20 years in the bond business. So-
Well, most people want to see streets and roads and infrastructure. A lot of them, you know, elderly, having no kids in house, they're not really concerned about parks and stuff like that. But I think we have to serve the entire republic, so therefore, we have to have a plan that's going to keep us level and have enough money coming in to take care of the structure, the infrastructure of our city.
Yeah, and streets are a pretty essential function of government. So, it normally, those are ones, as GOs, Lawton has a dedicated levy for streets. Moore doesn't have necessarily offer streets, but they've had some major street improvements and have one going on right now because-
Do you get a lot of support for?
For streets. And general obligation bonds are more difficult to pass because people, you know, I mean, they're just sensitive about paying property tax. Everybody is. So, I mean, certainly-
But if it's clear that it's going to be for roads, I think versus a park, I think you probably would get a lot more response.
Yes. And you, until this part, and there was a lot, and as you all know, there was a lot going on. That was some bad timing too, right? But, so the project and some of the stuff that had happened around that time, but before that, you've had, you've had other general obligation bonds before that, and they passed. So, in Yukon, you have definitely had a good success. You don't do them all, but you hadn't passed them that often, but you'd pass one, kind of let it go up, and then you'd find another. It was more project-driven, like, we need to build this, and then you issue those bonds, and you'd build it, and then something else come along, and you'd pass, and that's kind of what your history has been. Streets are a little bit different because, as it relates to streets, if you get a million dollars come in, you can do a million dollars in streets. If you have $2.5 million, you can do $2.5 million in streets, right? And there's just, there's always that need. But if you need to build a fire station, you can't build $1.5 million with a $6 million fire station, right? So, as it relates to, you all have had success with general obligation bonds, but it was, we need $6 million, period, because we want to build this, whatever that was. So, it does work well with streets. And as you're, if you guys go down that path, it's very specific as it relates to, and I'm, we don't have an attorney, the bond attorney here, but as a sense of, when you say streets, it's got to be for streets. And not only does it have to be for streets, but at least 70% of it has to be pretty specific in the sense of, we're going to pave Maine from first to 15, and Elm from, and you name, and you have to have 70% specific. Now, if it comes in under, you can use the excess money, not for anything you want, but for additional streets. And if it comes in over, you have that excess that was going to be for streets in general to kind of bridge the gap. So-
I'm sorry, I have questions.
That's all right.
Good question. And, I mean, for, and you know, there's a, I would add, Nichols Hills uses and has for a very long time, they have a fairly high tax rate. But it's interesting, they don't have a sales tax base. I mean, it's an affluent community, but you think about it, it's only a couple of square miles, and it's bordered. And so, all the restaurants people go to are in Oklahoma City. They have one little shopping plaza. That's it, as it relates to their sales tax. So, they needed to do streets. They need, there's a lot of projects, and just, they, that was, that was the only thing they could really go to. So, they started doing it, and have been doing it for 30 years now successfully, and maintained a, they hit a target, and they've stayed there for a very, very long time. So, I think, I mean, I'm happy to answer more questions. I don't have too much time. I think the question I get asked a lot is, you know, how much, there's always needs for cities and communities, and like, what can we afford? And there's never, the simplest answer is, and it's good timing to be here, because as it relates to, how much more can you budget for debt service? If you say, well, we can budget another million dollars a year for debt service, then I can say, okay, well, a million dollars a year for the next 10 years, you can borrow approximately $10 million. I mean, we kind of back into it. As it relates to your debt covenants, your restrictions, a thing like that on your debt, you have plenty of room, but that doesn't mean you can afford it, right? So, as you go through this budgetary process, it's, you guys, if you're wanting to borrow money for some capital project, and I'm talking about sales tax revenue or utility system revenue, you've got to say, okay, well, we're going to take money from here for additional debt service, so we can borrow however much money, with the exception of the ad lorm or the property tax. And that one, the nice thing is, it's a flow-through, right? I mean, it gets levied, and it flows through, and pays the bonds directly.
Well, who would handle that, where we're staying level with the same levy? I mean, is it-
Yeah, that's what we do. Yeah. Yeah, you just, if you-
Do I have to recommend it through the city council?
Well, but that would be a Tammy, that we would go to Tammy with that.
Okay. I just was trying to get a-
Yeah, I think if you guys getting a decision, that's, you want to at least see what it looks like, and how much it would generate, and kind of a long-term plan. And once again, it's one plan if you're saying, we're trying to generate X amount of money for streets, and we want to be able to have money every year for streets. That's one plan versus, we need $8 million for an animal shelter, whatever it might be.
Very good.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Is our Board of Adjustment person? Oh, there you are. You were behind the pillar.
I think I know the guy.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Joe Horn. I'm the chairman of the Board of Adjustments. I've been asked to come present tonight, and I'll just read to you what our duties are as the duties of the Board of Adjustment Administrative Review, to hear and decide appeals where it is alleged that there is an error in any order of requirement, decision, or determination made by the zoning administrator, building inspector, or other administrative officer in the enforcement of the City of Yukon Code of Ordinance. To authorize upon appeal in specific cases such variances from the terms of this ordinance as will not be contrary to the public interest, where owing to special conditions, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance will in any individual case result in unnecessary hardship, so that the spirit of the ordinance shall be observed, public safety and welfare secured, and substantial justice done. Such variances may be granted in such individual cases as unnecessary hardship upon finding by the Board of Adjustments, so long as there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to that particular piece of property. There's no unnecessary hardship, not self-imposed. Such conditions are particular only to that particular piece of property, and if granted, would not cause substantial detriment. I think in the packet, we have included the meetings that we have had over the last 12 Feel free to look through those. We only meet when there is something to meet on. Looks like we've had five no-meetings, two meetings regarding minimum front and side yard setbacks, one meeting over a garage setback, four agricultural buildings, one comprehensive plan meeting, four agricultural no-roads, and one height regulation. And I think we've got a pie chart included in there as well.
So, can you tell me if somebody wants to appeal, like, an ordinance that says you can only have 35% of your property covered? And so, they want to appeal that, would they come to you? They want to have, so that would be where they would come?
Right. They would come to our board, and we would, we would rule on that.
Okay. Eric, is, do your people tag team, or is one of them off, or you have two people?
Yeah, it's just Rhonda Dennis.
Okay.
But Steve Wilson served for part of the last year.
Oh, okay. So, he's not on there any longer. Okay. I was like, that would make it nice, and now you didn't have to go to every meeting. I like that.
We finally have a full, full board. I think for some time, we were, we were short, one or two people. We have, finally have a full board, so that's nice.
Well, I know that my representative, Mike McKee, enjoys his time.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Jeff was even on our board for a short period of time.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Horn, for coming and presenting that. We appreciate it. We'd like to know what you guys are doing, and, because we don't often get to those meetings.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Our next person up for our study session is Cardinal Point. I asked them to come because I think it's important for us to know services that we offer to our citizens, and this is a new one in our county. I'm very excited about what they offer, and was part of that group that was the grassroots. And so, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to come in and share a little bit about Cardinal Point. I also want to say I recognize some of your faces from the study tour and strategic plan when the Alliance for Hope came to Canadian County to see if we could use a family justice center. So, thank you for being a part of those initial discussions. Mr. Kachini was involved in a couple of our first subcommittee groups, and it's really great to have the voice of various kinds of people. Also, thank you to Chief Horn and Deputy Chief Roach. Yukon Police Department has been an amazing contributor and collaborator with us as we work to help people in our community who experience domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, and child abuse. So, just a little introduction, Cardinal Point is not about the bird cardinal at all. Our tagline is "A Direction for Hope," so it makes reference to the cardinal points. And really, that, after you experience the crime of violence, oftentimes, you're on this path, and sometimes you're not sure if it's the right path or even which way to go. And so, Spray Can Creative out of Yukon helped us come up with our naming and our branding, and we're so grateful for that. So, our mission is "We," with an emphasis on "we," "enhance safety, healing, and hope by working with people impacted by those crimes I mentioned through public and private partner collaboration." A family justice center is a collective impact model where, basically, we all come together in one location, and our partner agencies, who our core partners are made up of Legal Aid Services, Intervention Crisis and Advocacy Network, which is ICAN, the Cart House, and the Shion and Arapahoe Tribe, the Canadian County Sheriff's Department, our law enforcement agencies, and they all have agreed to commit their resources, their personnel, and their expertise in bringing this to one location. And so, when you're a person who's experienced these crimes, oftentimes, you're not sure which place to go first. Sometimes, you've called law enforcement, you know, and so, you're not sure what to do next, and this gives an opportunity for everyone in the community to say, well, there's one place, and when you go to this one place, there will be multiple agencies there to assist you if you have that need. And so, I have permission to share one of our first clients. By the way, we just established a Board of Trustees. Heidi Oliver is our secretary. She's also a survivor and a Yukon resident, and I was just going to give her a couple of minutes here in just a bit to share with you about her experience with Cardinal Point. But one of our first clients was from Yukon, and she was experiencing homelessness after leaving. So, domestic violence is the leading cause of homelessness for women and children. In this situation, she, she lost her child. Child welfare had to remove that child because of exposure to domestic violence. And unfortunately, we see that year to year in this county. We cannot have safe children if we do not have safe homes. And this mom was fleeing to try to get to safety, but she was left in the garage of one of her friends. So, the first thing she needed was a roof over her head. And as we come together as partners, that's what we're doing, is trying to plan for, what are the basic needs? And then after that, how do we provide long-term support and sustainability? And so, I'm proud to say, you know, she was referred to us. We put her in touch with all of the partner agencies that could help her with protection order, advocacy- order, advocacy, and linkage into housing. So Youth and Family Services in El Reno was able to house her. She's in her own apartment. She is employed with a good job, and she's well on her way to getting custody of her child back. So that's just a real example. I could stand up here and give you statistics and and the awful numbers, but I'm really here to just share in the hope of what Cardinal Point is doing, and really here to highlight the good work that has already been happening in our community for survivors, but now we're just coming together in one location. So I want Heidi to just take a couple of minutes and share what she does with Cardinal Point, and then we'll be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Thanks so much for having me here. My name is Heidi Oliver, and I am a 22 year survivor of domestic violence. I am also a resident of Yukon, as Christie said, and I'm a former public school teacher. So I actually finished my teaching career in Piedmont, and I have a wonderful husband of 21 years. He's amazing. He's here with me tonight, and he is a principal at Piedmont Public Schools. And as a survivor of 22 years, at my 20 year mark, I decided to come out and really tell my story. And I decided to tell my story so that I can make a difference in the lives of others and really help those that are suffering. Because as you know, domestic violence is all around us. It's in your neighborhood, it's at your schools, it's students in their classrooms. It is all around us. And without, you know, being able to get the word out and really provide that help and support for our victims and, you know, really provide that for them, it just needs to be aware. So I wanted to share my story for that reason. I got connected with Cardinal Point through Christie, and I was on, of course, the Strategic Planning Board and served on that or committee and served on that piece as a survivor, and then am serving as a Board of Trustees to help make those decisions and really help guide Cardinal Point in in the direction that we need to go. And so it is so important. When I was a a victim, there was not a place for me to go. I I had family, and I had a loving family, and I had my family to stand by me, but I was not aware of where to go or what to do. Of course, I was very young, but still, we have people here in our county today that they don't know where to go. They don't know what to do, and they are adults with children, and the children are suffering. And so it's so important to have this one location where all of our partners are together, where we can take, you know, that person that is at the the lowest point in their life, and we can walk them through that door and all the services provided for them. So one quick story is, there was a victim in our community not even a week ago, and through social media, through my contacts that knew that I had shared my story, knew I was a part of Cardinal Point, reached out, and I immediately got in contact with her. We immediately got law enforcement, you know, to her home. The following day, she wanted to get a VPO, but she was scared. And when I told her she did not have to go to the courthouse, that we could go to Cardinal Point and we could get that VPO, she agreed. We went to Cardinal Point. She was shaking, she did not want to walk through the door, but she walked through the door at Cardinal Point, and she was greeted by amazing women that worked there, and they helped her through, and and the sheriff's office helped answer the questions for her there. They helped her get the VPO, and she felt so much better. But it was just knowing that she didn't have to go into another scary situation where she was already scared. And so that is really my reason, is to give women and children hope and to give them a place where they can go, where we can provide safe resources for them and everything that they need. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions? In your location?
Yes. So we are so grateful to be on the campus of the Canadian County Children's Justice Center. We're right on the back of that campus. One, it's 24 hours, so we're allowed to help people, you know, anytime that they need help, which is amazing. But two, there's a lot going on at the front side of that building with Cord and other of their amazing services that they offer. And before we even opened our doors, we had just moved in back there, we had a child welfare worker walk a woman to our back door, and they were kind of just knocking on the glass to see if we were there. But she, she had just experienced physical violence the day before, and you could see it physically on her body. And so it just positions us to all be working with what's already happening on that campus for them to be able to utilize the expertise now of people who, this is what they do. They have a good understanding of the laws, they have a good understanding of the resources. So all of us working together, we're better together, and that's why we're doing this initiative.
Do you have any questions for?
Yeah, I I don't remember. How do we, how are we getting our funding at that location?
Our primary funding is through the Victims of Crime Act, which is federal funding that is not tax dollars. It comes from the litigation of federal crimes. And also, the Board of County Commissioners did provide some startup money for us.
I remember that now.
And it's open to anyone from Canadian County?
That's right. Anyone. And and we do understand that men experience these crimes as well, and so we want everyone to feel welcome there. Do you have set hours? Right now, we're open eight to five, but if people call us, we had a woman say, I don't get off work till five. We stayed late, and we're, we're happy to do that.
You're right next door to our casa, right?
That's right.
Right. And that's what makes this so unique and wonderful, is before, a woman who's already struggling to survive would have to go to this building or to this agency and to this agency, and you're already beaten down. And so it's all together in one building. I know when we were brainstorming, when we were first starting this, our, one of our brainstorming ideas was to have a place where they could actually stay for safety, to have some dorm type rooms, because some of them need immediate protection from that. And so I know we're not able to do that now, but hopefully, that's still a long term goal, is to have some housing for immediate.
Yes, Mayor, and thank you for bringing that up. When I wrote the most recent VOCA grant, I learned from our victim service providers that they sheltered 100 women and children in the last fiscal year. So we know the great housing need. ICAN has done an amazing job of housing people through hotel motel, but I know that that's been a conversation in the community, how can we get people more securely housed and for a bit longer than a motel stay?
Anyone else? I just wanted them to come so that we can advocate for you to people, to all of our residents in our different wards, because I think it's something that's not talked about a lot, and we do need to make that to where it's not shameful.
That's right.
And that we do have a place, and I am so thankful that Canadian County has this and is offered to our citizens.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. All right. That ends our study session, and so we will reconvene at seven o'clock.